Good evening, welcome. Wow, this is a great group of people here. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, December 21st, our last meeting of 2023. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Sernan?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. First up this evening, we have, one of our favorite things to do is to recognize our team members. So we'll have Chief Fagan come up and...
Get on the lights. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're practicing a great tradition within the fire service, and personally, one of the best parts about being a fire chief, the badge pinning. At this time, I call Lieutenant Zach Bruce, Lieutenant Jeff Madlin, Division Chief Sean Flew Hardy, Division Chief Cale McBurney, and Deputy Chief Ryan Stephan to come forward. These five officers are being recognized this evening for their recent promotions or reclassifications over the past couple months, and had demonstrated the leadership, knowledge, skills, and attributes to serve our community in a new capacity. We'll begin with the rank of lieutenant, which are the two individuals in the Navy shirts. The lieutenant, or company officer, is one of the most important roles in the fire service. They supervise a crew of firefighters, which at times may seem like herding cats, given our fantastic personalities and attributes. But most importantly, they lead a team, focused forward on completing challenging tasks in difficult environments, such as providing advanced medical care to an unconscious person, cutting apart an upside-down vehicle to rescue a trapped resident, or searching for trapped victims inside a building fire. This role is essential to ensure the alignment of our policies, procedures, and leadership towards our mission and vision. Both Lieutenant Zach Bruce and Jeff Madlin have demonstrated that ability and are being pinned with their lieutenant badge this evening. Next is the rank of division chief, the white shirts on the edges. These chief officers manage essential functions within the fire department, the Training and Safety Division and Prevention Division. The Division Chief of Training and Safety ensures all our responders are not only trained across the broad spectrum of hazardous events that we respond to, but also to ensure their records comply for certification and quality practices. The Division Chief of Prevention is heavily involved in fire code compliance, guarding the safety of our community and helping ensure our buildings are in alignment with the city's adopted code. The Division Chief of Prevention also serves as the Chief Fire Inspector and Investigator, leading both of those programs through the department. Both Chief Sean Flew Hardy and Cale McBurney have demonstrated that knowledge and ability and are being pinned with their Division Chief badge this evening. Lastly, but not least, is a reorganized position within the Marion Fire Command structure. This is Ryan in the center. The Deputy Chief of Operations is a branch manager over all emergency response, including fire suppression, emergency medical services, technical rescue, hazardous materials, and the Special Response Team, or SRT. The Deputy Chief of Operations also provides oversight of our three fire facilities, the Fire Fleet, and the Training and Safety Division. Chief Ryan Stephan has demonstrated the knowledge and ability to lead these programs and is being pinned with his badge this evening. At this time, I ask the chosen individuals who are going to be pinning the badge to come forward. Why don't you guys spread apart and let them stand in between you there? All right. Got everybody? So just briefly, why don't you introduce who's pinning your badge? We'll start with you, Cale. Why don't you introduce your family member?
This is my father. Was a fire chief and been over twelve years, so...
Great. Jeff?
This is my dad, John Madlin. Retired Assistant Chief, Mary Carter Hart, after twenty-one years.
This is my wife, Katie. She does a lot of support.
Zach?
This is my dad, Steve Gross. He was the one that kind of got into the fire service, welcoming him up as a young kid, and kind of gave him the job.
Sean?
My wife, Stephanie. Been there twenty-two years, so she took that off.
All right. Well, I want to recognize the family members, friends, and peers who support our firefighters and officers as they pursue professional development. This recognition tonight is also a tribute to their influence and impact towards the safety in our community. So let's pin these badges on. No blood, Katie? No blood? Okay. Yeah. All right, let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you on your promotions. And thank you for your service and dedication to the Presidents of Marion and the department. And I'm always so impressed to see the support group that comes out to these presentations. It just says so much about the people in the department and the family of people that make up the department. So congratulations again. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Anyone here to address council, please come forward? Sorry, sir?
Is this the first helpful comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm here for the second.
Is there anyone here to address council, please come forward? Okay, I will close this part of the meeting and move on to the next section.
Mayor, move to approve resolutions, excuse me, seven-one, excuse me, three-one-seven-two-one through three-one-seven-three-three. This will be items A1 through F1.
Second.
I moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, resolutions three-one-seven-two-one through three-one-seven-three-three. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. For the next portion, I'll turn over the meeting. The mayor pro tem?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Asli's abstention as follows. Items A1 through F1, resolutions three-one-seven-three-four through three-one-seven-four-zero.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items A1 through F1, resolutions three-one-seven-three-four through three-one-seven-four-zero. Any discussion or questions? Very good. All those in favor of the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-one-seven-four-one approving change order number one with WABTEC for the caboose refurbishment and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed $12,480.
Second?
I moved in second to approve resolution number three-one-seven-four-one approving change order number one with WABTEC for the caboose refurbishment and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed $12,480. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number three-one-seven-four-one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. Next item is a public comment period regarding requests for the addition of a four-way stop at the intersection of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Thirty-first Street. Do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, sure. So this is going to go through a few details on the TAC agenda, but I'll start off very high level. So Twenty-Ninth Avenue, obviously, has a lot more traffic than Thirty-first Street, as you can see in the TAC report, which we'll go into more detail of. Right now, it doesn't stop control for north-south, but not east-west traffic. If we were to put a four-way stop in, regardless of this other information, a lot of people that live on Twenty-Ninth Avenue would not be able to use their driveways, so something to keep in mind. So high level, the recommendation from staff is not to make it into a four-way stop and to turn it into a mini roundabout in the future. So high level, and then we'll kind of dive into some details on how we got there. So that, I want to make sure that's level set, and then, because I don't want to lose you when we start talking about the technical engineering numbers. So our MUTCD, our Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, is our guideline that we follow for this. So it basically has different criteria that if those criteria are met, then even if they're met, there's still other things to look at. But these are kind of the minimum. You have to pass this muster in order to do this. So the first item is A, is to control traffic while arrangements are being made for the installation of a signal. So let's say that this intersection actually met warrants for a traffic signal, but it's a six-month lead time, there's accidents happening, we just temporarily want to put a four-way stop in to alleviate that until the signals get here. In this case, the signal warrants, which is in the TAC report, are not met. And so item A is a no. So we got an X mark on that. The next one is if you have five or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period. So if it's an accident-prone intersection. In this case, there were eight crashes over five years and no more than two in one year. So again, that warrant is not met. The next one is a little bit complicated, where it has to meet C1 and C2. So C1, it has to have three hundred vehicles per hour that are going east-west, and it has to have two hundred vehicles north-south during the same hour. So it actually does meet C1. It meets it fifteen out of the twenty-four hours. It only needs to meet it for eight. However, C2, for the north-south traffic, has to meet it for that identical eight hours of some sort. So even though the fifteen, there has to be eight hours that there's two hundred vehicles north-south, same time that there's three hundred vehicles east-west. So that doesn't happen. So it's an and, it's not an or. So because C2 is not met, the C is not made. The third criteria is if it's a high-speed intersection. So if the eighty-fifth percentile is above forty miles per hour, because you have to take your time reaction of hitting the accelerator and going. So if it's a higher-speed intersection, they're saying you can take those and you can actually lower them to a lower threshold because of that gap and not being able to judge it because it's a higher speed. However, the eighty-fifth percentile on it is not forty miles per hour. So again, C3 does not apply and does not change C1 or C2. The last criteria, then, is basically if nothing was met, meaning none of those criteria, you could take it to eighty percent of the minimum value. So you're reducing the thirty and two, three hundred and two hundred to eighty percent and look at it. So that would take it to two hundred and forty and one hundred and sixty, respectively. So if no warrants were met, you could take it to eighty percent of the values and see if it meets warrants. Even with taking it to eighty percent, it only meets warrants six out of eight. So it still does not meet warrants. So another X on there. Typically, on a multi-stop control, you want to balance that. So you have even traffic in each direction. So north-south traffic is two thousand two hundred and forty-seven, whereas on Twenty-Ninth Avenue is ten thousand eighty-seven cars. So only a fifth of the cars are on Thirty-first versus Twenty-Ninth Avenue. So again, there'll be a lot of delay if you make it into a four-way stop. So that high level is the TAC report. We did mail it out to the fifty petitioners, and I believe some are here to speak, but wanted to go high level on the criteria that we use to give our recommendation to City Council.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to address council on this measure, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward, and please state your name and your address. And have you filled out the yellow card for us?
I have not.
Okay, maybe you can do that afterwards, but, and you should be able to get it down at the end of the table there. But if you can state your name and address, then please proceed.
Sure. Derek Fashion Gals, three-one-five Thirty-first Street, Marion here. So it's the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings, so tell me if I'm doing something wrong. I do appreciate you guys with everything that you have put into this. I do, I do understand the criteria there. But we live there, you know, and we've got to cross that traffic from Thirty-first through, you know, passing the Twenty-ninth. It's an absolute nightmare. If you, if you're going, so if you're going north, so if you're going south towards Marion and you're trying to turn left, going maybe to Walmart or something, or Hy-Vee or whatever, you just can't get across. Going right is fine. Crossing that traffic is an absolute nightmare. One of the things that was, we've only lived there about a year and a half. One of the comments that was made to me when we first moved in was, hey, we appreciate you guys being here, but it's a nightmare leaving this community, you know, because of the traffic. I mean, I appreciate all of this, and I know, you know, there was not one person that I spoke to out of the fifty folks that signed that petition that was opposing that, that, you know, having a four-way stop in that area. So I would petition that we do it, obviously. And I don't know what the the right way to do all this, but, you know, representing that English-Glen community and having traveled around and visited with those folks, it's, it's, it's difficult to get out of that, out of that housing section. Just watching kids trying to cross that traffic as well is a nightmare. Bicycles, you know, it's, 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 it's hard. The traffic is, is hard to get across. One of the things that we realized from that community is that Thirty-first Street, crossing into Twenty-ninth or wherever you're going, there are hundreds of houses in that area that use that street that really, unless they're going to go, you know, there's not a whole bunch of ways that you can get out of that housing division. So, you know, I would, I would like to see it happen. Obviously, there's been a lot of work put into it, and I appreciate that. And of course, we'll go with whatever you guys say. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to address council, please come forward? Have we received comments outside the meeting?
We received two emails in advance of the meeting, Jerry and Gordon Rector, two-nine-thirty-five Thirty-first Street. They were in favor of four-way stop. And then Derek, who just spoke, also emailed in favor of the four-way stop.
Okay, anyone else? Mike, did you receive any comments?
No, ours are all combined with these.
Okay, we'll close the public comment section. Move on to the motion.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to receive and file a traffic advisory committee report regarding a request for a four-way stop at the intersection of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Thirty-first Street.
Second?
I moved in second to receive and file the traffic advisory committee report regarding the request for a four-way stop at the intersection of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Thirty-first Street. Any discussion on receiving and filing the report?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a question. Mike, in the report, sort of the longer-range idea is, is to put a roundabout there? What sort of time, timeline and time horizon are we thinking of for that? I remember seeing it in some of our budget documentation.
Yeah, so it was one of the items that was not funded, but recommended maybe to move it from the not funded to the funded category. So it would depend on when we got funding. We could apply for TSIP funding, Traffic Safety Improvement Program funding. I don't know that it would score that high. Generally, roundabouts do score high, but it's not a high intersection with accidents, because they look at the cost-benefit ratio. So we could do a TSIP application, but I don't know that it would gain us anything. So I'm going to guess this is more on city funds, but if that's something we want to go down the route, we can certainly do the TSIP funding to try and get that.
So just, just the one other thing I would mention is, first off, I appreciate your explanation of the decision criteria decision gating that the data analysis suggests, which is important. And the other thing that you had mentioned is if we went to a four-way stop, we would end up having obstruction to some number of the residential driveways. I presume those would be along the south, south aspect of Twenty-Ninth going to the west. So I just am appreciative of those, those particular issues. Thanks.
Okay, and if anybody has more comments in that order, we can bring them up on the next motion. But this is the motion to receive and file. Any other discussion on receiving and filing? All those in favor of the motion to receive and file the report, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, make a motion to concur with the traffic advisory committee recommendations for the intersection of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Thirty-first Street.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to concur with the traffic advisory committee recommendations for the intersection of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Thirty-first Street. Discussion or questions for Mike? Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
Mike, was there also a request earlier on a crosswalk or on Twenty-ninth, not at this particular section? I feel like we're, I feel like we're starting to, and you know me, I'm always the one on the swakability, bikeability piece, but I feel like we're starting, this is starting to get a lot of attention. We've had attention, but with the changes, with some of the school has made, we're just seeing a lot more crossings across Twenty-ninth. We all know it's a large, it's a wider street. So I didn't know if that crosswalk request had also was part of...
Yeah, so that was Winchester and Twenty-Ninth Avenue. So it would be east of the mini roundabout that's there today.
Okay. And then another question, did the, the counts that we did, was it during school?
So we had to wait, they were on a ten-four, so we didn't do them during the middle of construction season, because as you recall, we had Twenty-Ninth Avenue tore up. So we waited till that project was done, let traffic get back to normal, because we didn't want to have skewed results.
So really, our only, because I feel the pain of that, that neighborhood, the neighborhood takes a lot of time to sometime out of the neighborhood I'm in. And so I, I understand the frustration, and I see that we're going north. So really, our options are stoplight, stop sign, roundabout, in order to help them with the turns, getting out of that neighborhood. Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, I mean, I appreciate the challenge that the neighborhood on the north side of this intersection face all the time. I mean, I live in this part of Marion, but I'm on the south side of Twenty-Ninth Avenue. And I remember the intersection of Thirty-Fifth Street and Twenty-Ninth Avenue, when that was a four-way stop. And then that got changed to the roundabout. In my opinion, having, again, I drive this area a lot. So to me, when we made that change, that improved the traffic flow tremendously. And if anybody at that intersection wanted to cross, at least everybody is slowing down or stopping and watching everybody else come across. So I understand how challenging it is with the width of Twenty-Ninth Avenue to do some of the things that have been requested. So the one question I have for you, Mike, is if we talk about a roundabout here, how common is that to have roundabouts like that only four blocks apart? Is that fairly, fairly common? Or I know this would be the right place to put it between there and, you know, Cleardown and Indian Creek Road. I don't see another intersection that would require it. Thirty-first is a, one of the major, other major north-south roads. So is it pretty common to have those only four blocks apart?
It varies. I mean, that would be the closest that we have. But if you think of Sixth Avenue, a lot of our major intersections there are full roundabouts. This would only be a mini, but it all varies. Sometimes if you start mixing, say, a signal and a roundabout, then you have issues with timing,
Right.
because that stop sign or that stoplight has a large queue, and then it releases them all at the same time, and they hit the roundabout at the same time. So then it can, it just messes with the timing versus having them periodically.
Yeah, I mean, I understand Sarah's comments completely. I mean, the Twenty-Ninth Avenue is going to be an ongoing challenge due to the width of it, and as you get more, I think, more housing built up further east, you know, that may even increase the traffic flow. But to me, at least with the roundabout at Thirty-Fifth, that does manage the traffic flow better. So I understand why you have the recommendation for this one. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow on to my prior comments, I live north of this intersection and traverse through there frequently throughout the week. And so I have a high sensitivity to the petitioners' concerns regarding the intersection. I guess, and I am sensitive to the fact that the problems that a four-way stop would, would impose on that area in terms of just the queuing of vehicles, perhaps east-west on Twenty-ninth. So I guess I just want to register my endorsement for moving forward with a roundabout. just wanna register my endorsement for moving forward with a roundabout as soon as is expeditiously responsible relative to our budget, budget prioritization. And if we can identify funding, you know, that will help propel that.
Is, Mike, is it, I mean, I know you said that the prospects of getting the grant funding may be less than for the other roundabouts that we've put in. But, I mean, is it still a good idea to apply for the?
It never, never hurts. The good thing with T-SIP funding is it's state funding. So it's half a million dollars max, which should pay for most of it. And it has very few strings attached to it, as opposed to some of our federal funding that has a lot of strings attached to it. So, I mean, it doesn't hurt. It doesn't take a long time to put the application in. I just know it won't score that high, but it doesn't hurt.
So, yeah, but we could still apply and see, see if we can get it. Matt, that was the funding we received for the Thirty Fifth Street, same, same story?
Yeah, Twenty Ninth and Thirty Fifth was T-SIP. Thirty Fifth and Seventh, that was T-SIP. So we, we tend to use quite a bit of T-SIP, even Albernate and Echo Hill was T-SIP.
I do know that, I mean, I recall when we installed the Thirty Fifth Street roundabout, there was a lot of discussion about whether a four-way stop would be, you know, less expensive and more, more expedient to get that done. But the, the. Yeah, the, the, the manner in which traffic would back up at the, that stop sign would make it impossible for people with driveways along Twenty Ninth Avenue on the south side to, to get out of their, their driveway. So it's solving an issue by, but creating another issue. And after, after the Thirty Fifth Street roundabout was installed, people north of there actually came to our meetings and thanked us and said it, you know, it, it made it so much easier to cross as a pedestrian or as a driver. And it really did help, help out the people living north of Twenty Ninth Avenue. So I'm hoping that it would be the same case here, and that we could try to find the funding somehow to get this done as soon as possible. Because I, I think that is a legitimate concern. I drive through there a lot. I don't live in the area, but it is a high-traffic area. And it is, I do see cars trying to cross Thirty First and just, it's, I've, I've, I've been in that position, position too, trying to go left from Thirty First onto Twenty Ninth. And it, you know, sometimes also it's a matter of perception, you know, what the, what's a, a minute or two may seem like it's twenty minutes. But, but it's, it's, the point's well taken that there is a lot of traffic on that road, and that's one we need to pay attention to. Will, you had something?
Yeah, just curious for the mini roundabout there, has anything been done so far, like engineering of it at all, or anything?
No, high level, we put together a number for the CIP, but that's, that's as far as we've gone.
And then the two houses that were moved at Thirty Fifth, they were voluntary.
Yeah, that had nothing to do with the roundabout. It was, that had nothing to do with the roundabout project.
Well, the, wasn't it because of the driveways and a roundabout? But they wanted.
No.
No?
Had nothing to do with the roundabout.
But this, that one driveway there on the east side, would that interfere at all?
Until we get into those details and start drawing it up, I couldn't tell you.
Couldn't tell you.
I mean, we have some driveways pretty close at Tenth and Central.
Yeah.
So it may become that that driveway is a right-in, right-out. But again, until we actually dive into details, I don't know.
Thanks.
Sarah, you have something else?
I'd just say I support the moving forward with the roundabout as quick as we can. Because I also think the other piece of it is, you know, we've got a park just south on Thirty First there that we host a number of our community events at, our farmer's market. Oh, that's, I'm going home. Yeah, go north, and then you try to turn. So toward the school. So whatever we can do to help between the schools, the parks, the connections with the, the trail on the north side of Twenty Ninth from the south neighborhoods, plus the traffic that we're dealing with, please let us know. We appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion concurring with the traffic advisory committee report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the 2024 sidewalk ramp project. We have a presentation, Mike.
Yep. So this is our annual program that we do. This is to comply with our ADA transition plan that we recently updated. So this is fixed, is about sixty ramps within our, our city to bring them up to current proag, which is proposed right-of-way standards. We did have six bids for this project. The low bid was boomerang. You should have a detailed bid tab in your council packet. They were received on December twelfth. So this has a, a start date between May twenty-fourth and July tenth with fifty-five working days and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. It did come in at ninety-one point eight percent of engineers' estimate. So if there's, if we see that there's not overruns on projects, we will likely add some more ramps and come back with a change order to do more with the money available. So we are recommending proceeding with the project.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open for comments from members of the public. Anyone here to address council on this measure, please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one is coming forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll ask if we've received any comments outside the meeting for the record?
I have not.
Okay, please note that in the record. Mike, you haven't received any, anything. Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the 2021 sidewalk ramp project as follows. Resolutions three one seven four two to three one seven four three.
Second. Been moved in seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2024 sidewalk ramp project, including resolutions three one seven four two through three one seven four three. Discussion? Hey, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one, amending section two six three dash one two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions of sexually oriented businesses. This is, will be the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one, amending section two six three dash twelve of the Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions on sexually oriented businesses. Discussion?
Yeah, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to confirm, is this to take care of some inconsistencies in our ordinances?
That is correct.
Okay. To have, match it up to the zoning ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three one seven four four, approving sheets for a Draper Insurance Central Corridor review related to exterior alterations for property located at six three one Ninth Street, Marion, Iowa. And this is Madison Custom Homes.
Second. Been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three one seven four four, approving sheets for a Draper Insurance Central Corridor review related to the exterior alterations for six thirty-one Ninth Street. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three one seven four four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-nine, amending the Marion Code of Ordinances by adding language regarding vacant buildings. And this is the final consideration.
Second. Been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-nine, amending Marion, Marion Code of Ordinances by adding language regarding vacant buildings. Discussion? Hey, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three one seven four five, approving the vacant building policy.
Second. It has been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three one seven four five, approving the vacant building policy. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number three one seven four five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. If anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Please complete the information sheet, and please state your name and address. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Dustin Maske. I live in Walford, Iowa. I'm here to talk to you guys about a couple lawsuits right now in Lynn County and some, some other legal paperwork regarding the Marion Iowa Police Department. The case number I'm talking about is L A C V one zero three four nine zero. In this lawsuit, number twenty says that Monica Slaughter of Lynn County Attorney's Office urged Bonnie to get breast reduction surgery. Number thirty-two says Bonnie protested and insisted that she didn't want anything with it, and then Monica exposed herself. Number thirty-eight, I'm not gonna say the words, but it's a B and it's a C. And I'll get to why those two words matter. On number forty-nine, Monica Slaughter touched Bonnie. On number fifty-three, Slaughter called Bonnie Tits McGee. I've heard that myself. On number fifty-nine, it shows on October seventh how there was a lot of problems inside of the office. Number sixty-five shows Monica Slaughter using the F-word. You guys are probably wondering, why, why am I bringing all this up? Reason why I'm bringing this up is because Casey does use those words, but he uses those words because the government officials use those words to him first. And he did thirty days in jail, guys, over lies and deception from the Marion Iowa Police Department. The picture that I have of you guys, it shows that the records department on the day in question is in the office, and they are supposed to be servicing the public. They stole two hundred dollars of my money. They have caused countless problems for a lot of people. And it's just a public disservice to be treating people like that. And the next thing I have, it is the Sarah Hyatt unemployment appeal. In this appeal, it talks about Sarah Hyatt is not just smoking a joint on her break. She is using marijuana dispensers to the point of sleeping in her boss's office. So the taxpayers were paying her to not just get a little baked, but to just get so incapacitated that you're sleeping on a taxpayer's dollar. And when you have this tinted glass and you have these public servants that don't identify, it really makes you wonder if that's what they previously done in that department, what are they trying to hide? And you guys may not believe me, you may not think, you know, what I'm saying is credible, but Channel Nine, The Gazette, and a lot of the main news around here is covering Monica Slaughter and Nicholas Maybanks. And pretty soon, they're gonna be covering Marion, Iowa. And if you guys choose to keep your head in the sand, all the people that are gonna consider re-electing you, they're gonna see your heads in the sand. You're, they're gonna see that, well, these people really don't care. But eventually, you guys are gonna have to deal with these issues. There is serious corruption in the Marion Iowa Police Department. I have videos, pictures, and it's just criminal the way that these cops are treating people. And the, the malicious prosecution, the, the lawsuit with Bonnie Waller also talks about how Bonnie Waller is concerned about evidence being planted on her and being charged with falsely planted evidence. That, that's in the lawsuit I handed you guys. And that says a lot about the Lynn County Attorney's Office, that that sort of thing is happening behind closed doors. And that attorney's office is where all the Marion, Iowa cases go. And the lawsuit also talks about how Monica Slaughter coaches Patricia to say things for the investigation. So it talks about planning evidence and coaching and creating false narratives to manipulate the government systems. It's all in that lawsuit I gave you guys. And the Marion Iowa Police Department, they're the same thing. They, they, they maliciously manipulate the evidence. They withhold things. They, they literally take innocent people and put them in jail for crimes they did not commit. And it's, and they're not being honest. That picture I showed you, i- it's, it's been a reoccurring thing at the department. Records is either in the office or it's not. And that picture literally shows, that is the body cam of a Marion Iowa police officer. And, and he knows that they're there. They, they know, they're, they're completely aware, guys. I really would like to have a meeting with you guys about the Marion Iowa Police Department and the Building Inspection Department here in Marion. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council? Now we'll move on to council comments. Start with council member Sir Ned.
Um, I have none. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone. I hope everyone has a safe, and I can't believe we're at the end of 2023 already. But it's been a great year, and looking forward to a great 2024.
I call that, just happy holidays, everyone.
Well, same here. I mean, it's the important message for the season. I do want to thank Ryan, your leadership team and all of the city staff who have indulged me over this past year for the various questions and issues that, you know, I come up with. So thank you for that. And again, happy holidays and however you choose to celebrate with your friends and family, please be safe.
Yeah, one thing I have enjoyed doing over the last three weeks is sending people to Uptown Marion to see all of our lights up there. I mean, the amount of work that has gone into doing that. I keep telling them where to go to look at the new lights, go to the Art in the Alley. So I love sending people to Marion and enjoy doing that. I also want to thank Chris Sherman for all of the photos that he has in the Marion Sun. I think those are terrific, high-quality, but I think those are another way to really show Marion in a way that the rest of us really don't get to see. So I appreciate that. But again, happy holidays and a joyous new year, and hope everybody has a good time with their family and friends.
Yeah, I would just say happy holidays as well. But last week or the week before, I was able to visit Hazel Point Intermediate to talk to like four classes of fifth graders about local government and answer all their questions about city council. And they, they had turned in. I got questions sent to me ahead of time. And we were kind of going through, and I could feel the room wasn't really feeling those questions anymore. So I asked, if we are the fifth graders. And so I asked if we could just open up, let's just take some Q and A, whatever's on your mind. And this is relevant in part to tonight's agenda with, with, with the caboose. And as soon as we opened it up for questions, one, one boy's hand just shot up. He was like, boom. And I was like, yes, okay, you. Where's the caboose? So I just thought that was a great moment. I, I gotta explain and educate them about the new upcoming Pocket Park. And they were all super excited about that. And, and from there on, I was getting, you know, better questions that they wanted to know about. So I just wanted to point that out and give them a shout out because it was really fun. I appreciate the opportunity to get to be there. So.
You survived, you fifth graders?
Yeah, there were literally like a hundred of them.
Almost their age.
Yeah, there you go. There, I was waiting for one of those.
That's why we sent you.
Yeah.
For my part, Chief Fagan earlier this week shared with me some good news about the department. I'd like him to share it with everyone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We received news of a grant award from the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation for Disaster Preparedness of ten thousand dollars for Emergency Operations Plan and Contemplative Operations Plan. So great news there for the community in support of community preparedness.
Thank you. I appreciate your proactiveness and how you're leading the department. Thank you. This is our, the last meeting for council member Harper as mayor pro tem. And so I would like to thank him. He's done a phenomenal job this last year. And as I stated on Tuesday, we do rotate that annually to give everyone the opportunity to serve in that capacity. And Grant has gone above and beyond and, and being, and being ready whenever I've asked him to step in and handle matters when I wasn't able to handle them, and, and also leading the meetings when I'm, I've been absent. And I just appreciate his contributions to the council. And look forward to working with him just as a regular council member over the next few years. So, Grant, we have a certificate of appreciation for you for your services, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Passing the baton to Sarah.
Yes. And just to wrap things up here for the year, I'm finishing up eight years as, as mayor. It's hard to believe that it's gone by so fast, but you think about all that we have accomplished just over the last eight years. It's, it's really a long list of things, obviously. Just if you're thinking of just physical projects and amenities, Prospect Meadows, two new parks, the YMCA, fire station, the public service facility, many new trails, the pedestrian bridge over Seventh Avenue, Sixth Avenue, lots of streets, of course. The East End Roundabout development that's happened out there, that whole industrial area getting redeveloped is in the last eight years. The East Town Crossing development, the Lincoln Square redevelopment, many larger multifamily complexes that we didn't have before, serving all socioeconomic levels of people, including the, the senior residential facilities that, that we've seen, several of those. We've reinvented our city center to make it a, a living room for the, for the region and a place that's a destination where people want to be and businesses want to be. We've welcomed many new businesses. On an organizational level, you think about when we started eight years ago, you know, the, it, it was much different. And I, I just, I really, I'm really appreciative of the level of professionalism that we have achieved together. We've really raised the bar for ourselves and everyone else in the region in terms of how we handle ourselves as a city, the customer service orientation that we've achieved, the professional decision-making that's, that's, that's taking place. It's not opinion-based, but fact-based and data-based, well-founded. The level of trust that we've built with each other and collaboration and, and the level of credibility we have established with our community. And I could go on and on and on. The customer satisfaction level in the community has really improved quite a bit. We've done this, you know, with challenges like the pandemic and the derachio. And we've accomplished all this in eight years, so just imagine what we can do in the next eight years if we continue to work together. As I said in my very first meeting, to give each other the benefit of doubt, to trust each other and to see the best in each other and to continue working together for the, for the greater good of the residents of Marion and really giving them the best opportunities for the best quality of life. And if we continue to focus on that, we'll continue to shine and be the standout community in the state that we have become. Marion has become sort of the, the poster child across the state of how to do it right in a community that invests in it, in its residents' priorities and a community that is really prioritizing quality of life and giving people opportunities. And just really proud of that, proud of how far we've come and just look forward to working with all of you for the next four years to do even better and continue to reach higher together. If you celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas. If you celebrate another holiday, Happy Holiday. And best wishes to everyone for a prosperous and healthy new year. Thank you. We'll see you all in the new year. Oh, we do have a closed session. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one-point-five-one-C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under twenty, section twenty-one-point-five-one-C of the Code of Iowa. May we have the attorney's legal statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one-point-five-one-C.
Any discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor of adjourning the closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Misskin?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sturned?
Yes.
We adjourned a closed session. Thank you.